Okay, let's go ahead and call the October 17, 2022, regular meeting of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll start with a prayer by Commissioner Vandergriff and the pledge by Commissioner Foster.
Miss Valerius, dear heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to humbly come before your throne to not only offer up our praises, but to lay down our petitions before you. Lord, we want to thank you for the abundant blessings that you have poured out on each of us. Thank you for the grace and the mercy that you freely give each one of us on a daily basis. Thank you for sending your Son, Jesus, into the world as a sacrifice and a payment for our sins. Lord, we commit this meeting to you. We ask that you lead, God, and direct our thoughts and our actions so the results bring honor and glory and praise to you. In Jesus' holy and righteous name, amen.
Amen.
The Lord is with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the appearance of citizens. If anyone would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, you can do so at this time. Just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. There's anyone that would like to speak?
Kayla Simon, 5,000 Western Avenue, but I work at 131 South Charles G. Severs Boulevard, so, sorry about that. I'm the executive director for ASAP of Anderson, for those who might not remember, and I just wanted to introduce y'all to our newest prevention coordinator, Savannah. She is a Anderson County local, and I'll let y'all hear a little bit about her from her.
Hi, my name is Savannah Mead. I am a lifelong Anderson County resident. I grew up in Claxton, went to Clinton City Schools, Clinton Middle School, Clinton High School, the works. I got my associate's degree from Roan State Community College in Oak Ridge, and the only time I've never not lived in Anderson County is when I got my bachelor's degree from MTSU in Murfreesboro. Since then, I've been back, and I'm currently living in Norris right now. I'm really excited to get to work and start working in the community that I grew up in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wondell.
I would just like to say glad to see Savannah back. She's from our community in Claxton, went to school with her father, know her mother, and it makes me feel good to see you back, and I know you'll do great things for our kids, and I appreciate all ASAP does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address commission on anything not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to the approval and correction of agendas, starting with the consent agenda. Got a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Have any? Commissioner Isible.
Yes, under the mayor's report, could you please add resolution number 22-10-967?
Right, that's the resolution to authorize the mayor to apply for Anderson County's American Rescue Plan funds.
Yes.
All right. Do we have any other corrections or changes to the regular agenda? We have a motion to approve as amended, Commissioner McCamey. We have a second, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing report. Vice Chairman Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For our consent agenda, at 6:00 PM, we had a public hearing on resolution number 22-10-960, which was an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include site plan requirements. No one in the audience voiced any concerns one way or the other on the resolution.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Isible, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion?
I'd like for Mr. Edwards of the Planning Commission just to give us a brief idea of what we're approving here tonight.
Okay.
For the general public.
Thank you, Mr. McCamey and Board of Commissioners. Essentially, this is just requiring a certified site plan for all commercial and industrial uses. We've had some plans come before the planning commission that have been hand-drawn. We, basically, it's just a requirement that engineer or licensed surveyor put their stamp on any site plan before approval. It was not, we had been requiring that, but we just needed it included in their zoning resolution. Pretty simple. Any questions?
Mr. Foster.
Does you, for residential, know a site plan required? Is it a hand-drawn with, for the permit, or do you guys even require a hand-drawn for residential?
I believe for residential, we don't really look at individual residential site plans as a planning commission. This was something that, we had had some commercial plans, I think it was a trucking business, and it was hand-drawn, and we could not really distinguish that the dimensions were accurate as far as setbacks. So, that's, that was the reason we, we required that. I believe that the, you'll have to check with public works and see if they require that for residential, but this is primarily industrial and commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we've got, under Department Presentations, HR Director Kim Jeffers-Witaker with HR Retiree Benefits.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me time to address you this evening. I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to pass out the emails that I sent out late, this morning, on the item we're going to talk about. If you can just take them and pass them around, please. So, what is before you this afternoon is the retiree benefit language clarification. So, what you're looking at is the retiree benefit is already in place, and all we're doing is clarifying some of the language and adding one portion at the end that speaks to the timeframe allowance moving forward. So, what you're, what's being passed around is the email I sent, as well as the minutes from the Board of Trustees, who has already reviewed and approved, and as well as the language in the back that has the red portions highlighted that speaks to the clarifications. So, I'll let everybody get a, get a copy of those.
I was seeing if the mayor, did you need a copy?
You need a motion?
So, yes, what I would like is a motion for the updated language. It will, will not go into effect, but we will start going ahead to, until January, but we'll start going ahead and communicating that to allow any of our employees time to plan for any of the updated language, which I'm not sure what that would be, but it still gives them that timeframe.
A motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote on this one. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That's all I have, unless y'all have questions for me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Finance Director Robbie Holbrook with the purchasing and budget reports.
Thank you, Chairman Vowell. Under the purchase committee report, contracts pending law director approval, there is one which has now been approved by the law director, school kit, board of education contract. It's a two-year contract for math curriculum.
A motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under new business, there was a contract for county clerk for Canon copier that has also now been approved by the law director.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And last, under new business, Comcast IT department contracts, a five-year agreement for internet service for the county buildings, still pending law director approval, I believe. Not sure if Jay, if you?
I haven't seen that one, but I'll check Nicole's desk.
Okay. It's the Comcast agreement here in the courthouse for Wi-Fi.
A motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge, I guess, pending approval. Subject to approval.
Yes.
Subject to approval, okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, how, if this passes, how will it be funded? What code?
It's already being funded in, Brian, you might have to answer that question. I'm pretty sure in 52600, in our communications code.
This is a renewal on our current internet package for the county. Our system runs on a two-part between AT&amp;T and Comcast. This is the portion that funds the internet, and it is a renewal. For this three-year renewal, we are getting a, the Jolly Building, they're giving us the same internet performance if they're put into the courthouse. We will get the exact same bandwidth at the Jolly Building, which will cause a lot of performance upgrades for that side of the world, but it is a renewal. It's already in code.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, to answer that question, Tracy, we fund that in the 58900 code. We, all communications is funded in that code.
Thank you, Robbie.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Robbie, I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you have that contract for the school department for security at the life development center? We sent it over last week.
Not, not on this agenda, no, sir.
Okay. We'll get it next month. That's a three-year deal. It needs to come to county commission.
Okay, that's all I have for purchasing. You have questions?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, is that something that's urgent? I mean, security?
Well, I mean, he's just the kind of person that's been there. We just don't have a contract, so we're trying to put a contract on it. We've had some questions about what he, what the employee does there, so we're just, Jay's worked a contract through, so we can get it done.
Okay.
We, we sent it over last week. It is a three-year with an option to renew. It mirrors the one that we have at Blockhouse Valley. The only difference is this gentleman is not a deputy sheriff, but he's been there, he's familiar with the property, he's been there for years. So, he's done a really good job in the past, but it's just memorializes the agreement.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner Mays.
Is that something we can just approve pending law director approval tonight?
It's been approved by our office. I guess it just slipped through the cracks somehow.
If you all approve it tonight, we can go ahead and get it.
Yeah, there's, there's no money involved or anything like that. He just, he stays there, and we pay the life bill and the batteries.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey to go ahead with the contract, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Yeah, I mean, I would certainly like to see the contract at some point.
I'll send it to you tonight.
I'll sort of say I can email it to everyone tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
If I have it, Jay, I'm not even sure.
Let me do it. I've got it.
Okay, sure.
I've got the approval over to you. Thank you.
All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Unless there's any other questions, that's all I have for the purchasing agenda. Okay, for finance, cash and fund balance report, Anthony, September 30th, 2022, again, unaudited numbers. We are working on final numbers this week, though. I'm meeting a lot with auditors tomorrow, and we'll possibly have a report by Friday that would have final numbers. So, on the general fund line, restricted funds, 1.1 million, committed funds, 1.6 million, assigned funds, 2.1 million. An assigned fund balance, 11,276,376, for a total fund balance of 16,194,258. Cash, 11,577,571. For the 141 Fund, school department, fund balance, 14,428,527. Cash, 14,537,268. Any questions on the cash and fund balance report?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you. Robbie, it looks like the funds are trending down.
A little bit.
And do you have any thoughts on that?
I did run a report of revenue and an expenditure report. So far this year, we've only collected from September 30th, 2.4 million in revenues, and we have spent 8.2 million in expenditures. Now, normally, we catch up, obviously, in the, when we start collecting taxes, which should be more December, January, and February, things will even start to even out there.
On that 8, 8.2 you mentioned, that, none of that's including the 121 Fund, the ARP Fund?
It's all general fund.
If we go all the way over to the right on that cash balance sheet there, cash and fund balance sheet, up top, it's 11,577,571 dollars. And then you go all the way down, those are additional cash items?
For each fund, yes, sir.
Is there any way that you can total that up?
I can give you, start doing that, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see that at the bottom.
No problem.
A little more, and I, and go ahead and do, do it for the total fund balance as well.
Okay, sure.
If you don't mind. Thank you, Robbie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. For the cash, for the sales tax report for August, county as a whole, 3,586,612 dollars, down 4% from last August. The Anderson County portion, 496, 496,863 cents, which is up 8%, almost 8 and 1/2% from last August. So, we're kind of just leveling off with the sales tax, but we're still, I mean, getting really good numbers in. Any questions on sales tax report? Okay, if no questions, group two appropriations by the school, there are four of them, five, six, seven, and eight, seeking approval as a group. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Dr. Parrot would too.
Motion by Commissioner Foster to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. There are no group three transfers from the school department. Group through, group four appropriations non-school, there are nine of them, 9, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 19, seeking approval as a group. Or individually, or I can answer any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Group five are transfers non-school. There are three of them, 18, 20, and 21.
Motion by Commissioner Isible to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And group four, group six appropriations that affect the general fund and assigned fund balance, there are four of them, 11, 22, 23, and 24.
Motion by Commissioner Vowell to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Any discussion? Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the commission know that that, for the washer and dryer equipment, that did go out on bid the very next day. Purchasing did a phenomenal job of putting that all together.
And I do believe it closes on Friday, so.
So hopefully, we'll have a better number than 143, 138, hopefully. But that, that motion was not to exceed that amount, so.
Correct. Any, any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
Mr. Chairman, what happens if the bid comes in more than 143,000?
They would either have to buy fewer washers and dryers than they need, or we'd have to bring it back to county commission for an additional approval.
Well, but the need was so great. I'm just wondering if it does come in too high, somehow or another, we've got to go ahead anyway, I would think. But the remedy would be buy less then.
Yes. That's the way I understand it, yes.
Would that suffice the problem?
It would help, but it wouldn't solve the problem, no, sir.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Under group seven miscellaneous, section A, the volunteer fire departments additional funds, that was a budget amendment approved, number 23, for $6,800, $6,800, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question on something else we've already passed. I'm not going to change my vote, but I had a question on it. Let, let Robbie finish his thought, and I'll come back to it, if that's all right.
That's okay.
You good?
Yes.
Item 14 there, the 235, which was, was that that state grant on, that came into the?
Yes, sir.
And are we taking, what, I think when we talked about that budget, we, we take those funds out first, and then they replenish?
It's a spend reimbursement. So, we have to spend the funds, and then they, the grant, through the grant, you apply for a reimbursement.
So, we're increasing these codes, and, you know, ones for revenue code, and ones for expenditure code. So, you're increasing those codes from what fund?
Well, you're not, you're increasing revenue, so it's expected revenue to come in, so we're covering the expenditures with the revenue coming in.
And how is the 235 accounted for that we have to put up front?
We typically do these with all the reimbursement grants like this, so we, there's not, no, there are really no guarantee they're going to spend 235,000. We may spend only 100,000, so then we would only spend 100,000, and we'd only receive 100,000. We're going to get the same amount of revenue that we have spent.
Right, yeah, I understand that. I just.
That's the, that's the amount of the grant that we can up to, 235,000 dollars.
So, we don't necessarily take 235 out, 235,000 out of undesigned fund balance, put it in the other code?
No, sir. We're not doing that, no. It's just expected revenue to come in, kind of like when we were expecting property taxes to be 14 million. We put that in the budget as 14 million, and we put, I mean, that funds the majority of our general fund budget, so it's, it works that way.
Thank you for explaining. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Section A was the budget amendment for the volunteer fire departments. We've already passed a motion for that. Section B was the EMS replacement equipment. No action was taken on that. Section C was the, under new business, was the detention center laundry equipment. A motion was passed there, and we've already covered that with the budget amendment 24. And under new business, centralized IT budget code, a motion was passed to, to explore establishing a centralized IT budget code. I talked to Commissioner Wondell about that tonight, and I'm going to try to bring something back to the budget committee for that next month to have for discussion, so. And under old business, the new grant coordinator was introduced. We did hire a new grant coordinator in the county, in the finance department, and he's been working three weeks now, so we introduced him in the budget committee and the finance committee, so.
Commissioner Mays.
That's all the business I have. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the centralized IT, are we talking just equipment? Are we talking maintenance of effort money? Are we talking that other departments have in salary codes? What exactly is the aim here?
That I'm not 100% sure of as far as the aim. I think more equipment, you know, data processing needs. We do have some fee offices that already have restricted codes that they have, including the sheriff, which I don't think much money goes into that, but a data processing restricted code, when they collect revenue, that it goes into that fee office's restricted code. But a lot of departments don't have a way to fund IT needs, and so sometimes we struggle finding those funds unless we come to county commission and, and request in a budget committee, so.
So, you're talking about like this, the 709 code?
Yes. But we did establish a code this year for the IT department in Fund 171, the capital improvement fund, that we set aside $25,000 for IT infrastructure needs, like for the 700, like computers and stuff like that.
Got you. Thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'd like to see the IT committee, you know, have, have, have some thought on it, you know.
Right. I'll get with Jeff. He's the IT, I think he's the chairman, right?
Yeah, we're meeting for 27.
Thanks.
Any other questions? That's all I have for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robbie.
Got the directors of schools, Dr. Parrot.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson, and I hope you got a chance, everybody got a chance to read my report from last, from this month. And just a couple of things, as we talked about budget, our, our budget is right on track. We're taking in a little bit less on sales tax, and so we are going to account for that. But one of the things we can account for is fuel escalation cost. As you were up at the I-75 exit, diesel was up to 509 today. So, every dime that goes up, it costs us more money to run the buses because we have to pay our contractors more money. So, we'll probably have to do a budget amendment probably early in January to February. We'll be out of money in that code for transportation, but that's just part of the, making sure our kids get to school. On some other things that y'all approved last month, where we could purchase the property beside Clinton High School, it has been purchased, it's been closed on. We take possession, we've already taken possession of, they've still got some stuff in there to take out, but that is really going to be a phenomenal project there. As you know, the governor put about 500 million into CTE programs for everybody in the state, and every, every high school gets a million dollars, and, and every middle school gets a half million dollars, but you can use it, we can use it as a, as school. So, we're going to look at building a complex over there to hold the agriculture department and to hold a welding, a new welding department. And what that will do, it will, it will free up spaces at Anderson County High School so we can put in almost 120 more students to take welding. And it will also relieve the pressure on our STEM classes at Clinton High School, so we can move the STEM classes into a bigger facility. So, we're, we're really excited about that. I think we'll do that with very minimal cost to the district. We may have to put some equipment in there, but the money's in the budget to do that. So, hopefully, over the next year, year and a half, that'll be something to come to fruition. Our ESG projects, they are almost wrapped up. I think that's about 90 new heat and air units in, in about seven or eight of our schools. A lot of new lights, a lot of new windows, a lot of new paint. We're still working on the brick at Norris Elementary School, but the inside of those classes, if you get a chance, they're phenomenal. Norris Middle School, they've got all the foundations poured. I think they've got the foundation block up. Hopefully, this week or early next week, they will have all of the slab poured. Believe it or not, it's hard to get that much concrete at one time anymore. hard to get that much concrete at one time anymore. And so they've got to really schedule that out. Another thing that, just to kind of let you know, Mr. Dill talked about safety last month. The equipment we've ordered for all of our new safety cameras is starting to come in and we'll be replacing all cameras at about four of our elementary schools and updating the rest of them, so. And just one last thing, the partnership with our sheriff's department this year, you all approved us to do a different MOU and it's been great. We're fully staffed, our SROs are doing a great job and really and truly have become, they always were there, but, but this has allowed them to work a little bit more and become partners in them school. So we want to thank the Sheriff Barker and his staff for helping us do that.
Good job.
I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, any updates on the COVID or the flu shots?
We did, I had those numbers. It was right around, right around 1,000, a little less. One of the things that we did last year and this year because of COVID, we did the registration online and I think at our elementary schools that kind of hurt us a little bit. And so we're going to go back and change the way we're doing that. But yeah, we've, we've had been in all of our schools and anybody that wants one. And, and I tell you, Walgreens up here has been a great partner with us. They do that at no cost and it saves the county about 15 to 20,000 every year that they allow us to do that. If you have insurance, they take it. If you don't, you still get them. So, and I'm thinking that if you go up there, they'll probably still give you.
Just to follow up, Dr. Parrott, on Clarkson School, construction or?
We're still waiting. Hopefully we're going to get some information in, in, by the end of the year from TBA and that will kind of let us know where we're going with that one. We still, another thing on that, we still don't have all the parts in to make those lights come on by themselves, so we've got somebody that comes over there and turns them on and, and turns them off every day. So working on that and then.
You're talking about the schools?
Yeah, the schools on like, we also have been working with our, with Gary Long on getting some signs that say end of school zone. We talked to one of the officers and he said that might help for people know, hey, until you get to that sign, you still need to slow down.
Yes. I appreciate you mentioning the school zone. I know the sheriff's department's done a great job. I appreciate them putting some officers out there and that sign's helped out a lot, too. Just quickly, Dr. Parrott, I see in here the innovation, I found my way, finally where I was supposed to go today. I, I guess I'm just curious, besides the innovation academy, what does the school system, Anderson County, do to engage that Anderson County higher facility?
You talk about the new one?
Yes.
We have a lot of students that go over there and do dual enrollment through, through ACCTC. They also are working with the, this summer, they did a partnership with the middle schools. They actually, the middle schools read a book on, I don't, on a career for, I think it was hair coloring and stuff like it. So then the kids went over there and they took them through and showed them all those things. So there's a real commitment. We take a lot of our students over there and let them go through and look at that. But the biggest thing is our students can go over there with the, the way we've got our MOU, they can go over there and take those classes while they're in school free of charge with dual enrollment.
I guess from my perspective and going, walking through, and there's many other commissioners who made it today, but it just struck me, Dr. Parrott, that there needs to be a, a very concerted effort. And I'm not saying there isn't one, okay?
Yeah.
I'm not involved in it day to day, but it, it's a tremendous resource for our kids coming through the system that might not go into a full-fledged college, even though they are still getting an associate's degree in this new facility.
Yep.
And, and something that struck me is I couldn't find it. Of course, I knew where it was mentally, but there's no sign on, on the I-75 marquee. It just kind of struck me and, and I, I just, I would respectfully ask that you and the board develop a, a program that delivers our youth to that facility in a very large scale. And, and I'm talking from elementary all the way up to high school. We heard the stories today about welders making 157,000 a year, $7,000 a week. We heard about injection molders, the whole, the whole gamut, PCL guys and gals. And it's just important to me that we utilize that resource in, in, in a much larger scale. And I, I just don't know what the dichotomy is between our school system and that, and that entity. And that's what I want to learn more about.
I, I'll get you some information on, we've actually, we, we partnered with them on two or three grants that, one, one they're working with right now is linemen and the other is with the STEM certification. We, we actually, in, in that building, Rome State's in there too, so we really and truly, our kids go over there for the, for the middle college.
I guess the, the part that seems to be missing to me is our community, I don't think understands that that's available.
Right.
The Tennessee Disconnect or Connect, I'm probably calling it the wrong thing.
Reconnect.
Yes, sir, thank you. If, if you're 23 and over.
Yes.
You qualify for free school.
Yep.
And, you know, we heard stories about kid, students getting fuel cards to attend and, and I just, I just would, I'd like for our community to know that this resource is there to go and get educated. And, you know, I was listening to the presentations today and, and I couldn't help but think, you know, to Commissioner Vowell's point, how, how come we can't seem to all come together to help each other out? You know, it sounds like there's a scream out there. You need people. And then there's people that need something, a job, a, a hope, as you called it. And I feel like there's a way we can develop that with the sheriff's office and the school system and the county government. I feel like we can do that and this is a tremendous opportunity out there. And for those of you that didn't get to go, I, I encourage you to go. I appreciate the chamber, whoever set it up. It was amazing, Mr. Chairman, and I, it opened my eyes up to a lot of things. But I'd like to work with you, Dr. Parrott, anything I can do, I'd like to, to do it.
I will, I will work on it.
What are, what are the latest numbers on the students that have completed or gotten an associate's degree or done middle college?
We, we, we run about 20 to 25 a year that get the associate's degree middle college. Now, we have probably 200 to 400 students a semester that take dual enrollment. And so like our welding, our, our, the change in the new law now, our ninth graders can actually take dual enrollment and 10th graders can take dual enrollment. Before it was just juniors and seniors. So what happens like if you're in welding? So they take welding one and two at, at our school and then for year three to TCAT, they go, they can either go up there, we still have a lot of them going to Jaxborough with that because we've got a MOU with both of those. So that's kind of how they do that. The middle college for, for our mechanical industry, that is juniors and seniors, so they still do that. And then the really academic middle college still goes to Rome State in Oak Ridge.
That 20 or 25 a year have an associate's when they graduate high school.
Yes, yes. And, and I think last year, we had over 2,000 credits of dual enrollment credits that our seniors graduated with. And that's all free of charge. The legislators upped it this year so they can take, now they can take another class.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Parrott, that was a very, very impressive program there. It's something that I would like to see made known to more and more people. I can agree with Commissioner Wondell. Very impressive. The, the instructors, I could tell were passionate about teaching these students there. How can we get the word out? I don't want this to be kept a secret, you know?
Right, right.
Because it is really, if you went out there, we were all impressed by what we saw there.
Yes. I, I can work with TCAT. We really don't have no jurisdiction over it because it's out of TCAT of Knoxville, but I will work with their director, me and her talk all the time, and see how we can maybe get our local news to run a story out there or get some other things on there and work with our industrial board on making sure that there is a sign out there at the end of the road.
Commissioner Foster.
I know one thing, the welding instructor spoke highly of the welding instructor for ACCTC and said that a lot of the students that come out of his program are farther ahead than what they're seeing with somebody just coming or, you know, knowledge, but they, he was very complimentary of your guys' program, so I want it to be stated.
Yeah, it shows. I didn't even know they were having it today, so I guess, I don't know if I missed that email or, I don't know.
Any other questions for Dr. Parrott?
Thank you all. Please email if you, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Tim.
Except we've got the county mayor, Mayor Frank.
Good evening, commissioners. Before I get started, just a little quick note. When my sons were growing up, they loved to watch wrestling and that's the only time that I've ever done pay-per-view in the house, twice for some wrestling events. And I have to say, I was always partial to Kevin Nash, former UT basketball player, big sexy. But the, my youngest son, before he went off to his full-time job, took a trip to Nashville with some of his friends to see an event, a wrestling event, I think there were 30,000 folks there in Nashville. And they sent me a little video clip of Mayor Jacobs. And he was in a suit and so I text him, I'm like, what's with this, what's with the suit? You know, because I know that he's Kane. And he says, Mom, that's corporate Kane. And I said, oh, okay. So as Commissioner Vowell is up here tonight and he's stepping away from his jail duties in the uniform, I think you are entitled to a new name, Corporate Shane. What do you think? You've, you've gone corporate on us. You're leaving the.
I told the dress code for this new job, it would require a suit and tie.
It is.
Maybe a blue sweater.
Corporate Shane.
Or anything.
First item of business on my agenda is property at Glen Alpine. So I put in your packet back the minutes from October 21st, 2019. And as a lot of new commissioners may not know this, but a longstanding issue in Anderson County, this is between Anderson County and Clinton actually, was the Glen Alpine Convenience Center. And when the county finally landed on some property that had the agreement with the city of Clinton, we had some positive feedback from the community, we purchased more acreage than we needed. And so what this motion is, was a transfer to ACDC the remaining 9.24 acres so that that property could be sold and get back out there on the market and, and, you know, become commercially used or industrially used. And so the ACDC board met, they did not want to set a price without an appraisal, that happened. And then the discussion took place about dividing this property into two parcels and where would that dividing line be. I met with Jay on this matter. We discussed having a zone to buffer between whatever else went on that particular site near our convenience center. Given that, I don't really feel that I have the authority to just draw that line myself. I think we need commission to make a recommendation for that. And so what I'm suggesting here is a working group where we could work on this, come back to operations committee, get some feedback from the full committee, and then that would authorize the division of the property and the creation of a deed and, and the filing of that. And so what I'm suggesting is the two commissioners who represent that particular area, the chairman of the solid waste board and the solid waste director. And I'm happy to work with these folks and of course, we would work with Jay on that as well, to come up with a plan where that dividing line should be. And the reason it's important is if you look at what's in your particular packet, you'll see, I mean, there's just one entrance and this is a heavily used site, so we want to make sure we get this right from, for citizens in the community. You know, is the entrance to the property just a quick right or does it travel the length? What does that look like? And this is a very engaged community. There are a lot of folks that have a lot of input on the convenience center, its operations, any traffic and safety concerns. You saw safety concerns come to the operations committee for Brookstone Ridge subdivision. So we want to make sure we get it right and we have full buy-in. So I just wanted to get your feedback, see if you were agreeable to that action plan, putting this working committee together that could come up with some, maybe one or two or even three ideas of how to divide that property.
Commissioner, you've got a motion to move forward with that, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? All those, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I'm looking at this minutes you provided us. What, I, I can't recall. Did we purchase this property or is it property we already owned? I mean, I see there's 500 instead of the two, instead of the usual 2,500. I can't remember.
Yes, so we purchased the entire parcel. I think my recollection is the purchase price was $375,000. And then we located the convenience center on the far left end, which provided, you know, was, it was further back. In fact, Ms. Nepper was one of the, Mary Nepper was one of the folks on a beautification committee that met frequently on this. They helped design and pick colors on the attendant shed. So no, we, we do own the entire property, but the remaining acreage was transferred to ACDC for marketing and reviewing site plans and what would go there. So some of the things, for instance, were discussed at ACDC. Folks don't, you know, want a chemical plant or something like that. So those are the things that ACDC is going to be looking at.
So we did purchase it?
Yes.
All right, I just, that group that's formed task force, I'd like for that, you know, for that information to be shared and then how much money's, how, how will that work when it sells? I mean, is that all those things that'll be figured out in the task force?
Yes. Well, no, ACDC will be setting, will set a price. There was an appraisal. There have been various numbers put out there. So for instance, what the going acreage per, or per acre price is at the industrial park. But that is all yet to be determined. I think the, the first step though has to be, what does that division look like? So for instance, one of the issues that Jay raised is even though there is case law, and I don't want to speak for Jay, Jay would speak better on this than I can, obviously, but I'm going from my memory of what he said. There is case law about building to a nuisance, but you know, you don't want someone to build there and then all of a sudden they say, the convenience center smells. And then it becomes this issue for Anderson County government because, you know, we sold the property to someone and now they're complaining about a known neighbor. Did, did I accurately convey that, Jay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster, what's the current zoning of the property? Is it industrial or?
It's I-2.
Is that something, I talked to one of our planning commissioners, he said maybe commercial. Will that be something the committee looks at too, the zoning, just make it more, I guess, more opportunities to put on the property? Does commercial allow that, industrial? So can the committee look at that also during this process of the zoning best for that area?
We can and I'd have to defer to Jay and, and Harold is here, Tim is here, but I think with I-2, a commercial can go there. Is that correct? But I-2 is, you know, I think that's a very difficult one to get an industrial, like if you were changing from a particular designation to an IT or I-2, so.
I think the, I guess the convenience center is I-2.
Yes.
Right, also. But neither parcel, it's, it's not in the industrial park, it's just.
No, neither one of them are in the industrial park. That's correct.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The next item is just a resolution in support of our first response, it's the First Responders Act. This has been introduced to the United States House of Representatives. And what this legislation would do, would establish an EMS grant program with funding at $50 million per year. Grants could be used for training and retention of paramedics and EMTs, equipment and facility modifications, as well as additional purposes as seen fit by the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And you'll note in the resolution, the 911 call volume in Anderson County has increased by 20% from fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year in 2021. And in the current year, on top of that, the 911 call volume is already an additional 3%. And so this resolution is authorizing your support and me to transmit that support, and then also to ask Governor Lee and the Tennessee General Assembly to enact similar state legislation in support of our EMS first responders.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and it's really good to see the federal government starting to see the issues with 911. When folks dial 911, they expect response, and they expect, it used to be Commissioner McCamey knows very well about how fast you got someone from the pickup to the hospital, and now there is an expectation that you're coming with a mobile emergency room. And so there's a great increase in expectation, and our folks are meeting that need. The last item I have is, so I have this as a last-minute add, which I do not like to do, but in going over the final application process for our TDEC ARP grant, I discussed with Randy Walters, who's been all things ARP, that I would really like to have a motion of support for you all when I hit the apply button. And we do not have to have a resolution, but then Randy and John Prince, who is the new grants coordinator, we three got together, we liked the idea of a resolution. And Jay has reviewed it. He said it looks good or great, I can't remember which adjective. And so I'm asking for approval, and this is for the application itself.
Motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners, and that's all I have, unless you have anything else. I do want to say a couple of things from tonight's meeting. I do believe the landfill actually sells or makes available to KUB the methane, energy from the methane. But I told Mr. Fink that I would verify that, that that's still happening. I know I took a tour maybe eight years ago when they were doing that, but I'll verify that. Another thing on, to Commissioner Wondell, Commissioner Allen's point about TCAT, something that used to happen back in the day, and I'm not saying this to be critical, but back in the day, there used to be a TCAT Advisory Board. In this Advisory Board, I served on it, numerous stakeholders from several communities served on that board. They had regular meetings, they had luncheons, they had events, and it might look like you're kind of there tooting your own horn, but the purpose of that Advisory Committee was so that every member that was sitting in those rooms went back and shared information with their community. And to my knowledge, I've served on that committee, to my knowledge, with the change in leadership. Again, I'm not being critical, every leader has their own, you know, plan of action, but I do think that is something that maybe anyone who has, you know, an interest, you may reach out and say, this might be something that we need to start back up, because it's good to brag on your organization, it's good to involve folks, so that they go back out and serve as ambassadors for the message and the programming. We used to get packets of how many classes they're teaching, what the waiting lists are. And so when you see waiting lists for some of these classes, like a welding, or, you know, you see your state rep, you see your governor, you see your state senator, then you say, are you going to send some more money to Anderson County because we've got waiting lists, we need more classroom space? So that might be something that you all consider. And then lastly, I did distribute to Commissioner Vandergriff and Chairman Anderson at Operations Committee, there was a request from citizens in the community to reach out to TDOT about allowing another access from Brookstone Ridge. TDOT did write back, I shared that with Mr. Jaeger and the Commissioners from that district. They would not reconsider a second entrance or second access point, but they are requiring the developer to create a turn lane. And so they have asked Anderson County not to allow any building permits until that turn lane is constructed. So just an update on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good information, Mayor. You bring up a couple of good points. Methane with waste management, that contracts with waste management for landfill, correct? Are we sure we don't own the rights to that methane?
Not sure.
So who owns the trash?
It's we dealt with there, it's there.
It's Waste Management's.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I know we had that 50 cent tip and fee, I'd be interested to explore any other type of tip if the, on the way out.
They're not burning as much methane as they used to, but they still, I'll see it from time to time, coming up the interstate, they'll be burning methane off.
Okay. And then Mayor, on that TCAT Advisory Committee, I love the idea, I forgot about that till you mentioned it. Would you be open to us, if I made a motion to have you send a letter or explore that?
Absolutely, yes, I'd be happy.
Would you be okay with that?
Yep.
Would you like to write the letter?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to respectfully request the mayor to evaluate and seek information on the TCAT Advisory Committee. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Absolutely.
And the last thing, any updates on the flags for Veterans Bridge?
So I finally, I have the last piece to be able to apply. I had to have a planting schedule. Seth in 4H got that to me, and I just need to package it all and send in the final information that they requested.
Thank you for that.
I did see on the Veterans Advisory Service that Leon thought I had already done that, but I had not. That was the last thing I was waiting on.
Thank you for that update.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your help. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Isbell.
Hey, Mayor, on the Brookstone, on the left turn lane, where's that proposed to be? On the developer's property, or is it going to be off the state highway or the county road?
You know, I don't know. I can get more details on that. I did not look closely at those maps. I know what happened when we had to construct an extended turn lane in front of the convenience center. The cost was on us, but it was on, you know, their right-of-way. So I would assume that would be their partnership.
And which would be on the highway part on the state side?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So, and I know costs have increased, but it seems like when we did that, it was around $75,000 for constructing that turn lane. And so I know pavement's up, but I don't know what that cost would be for them.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like a southbound left turn lane and then a northbound desemination lane on the shoulder. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to be with you again tonight. I'm going to be brief, I only have, I think, one, maybe two action items. Move on down to lawsuit. As I told you, the pro se plaintiffs in this case dismissed their federal lawsuit, they now refiled in Circuit Court. And they've added some defendants, but got Mr. Stevens, which is my client, Trey Hargit, Mr. Slater, he's already gone from office, he gets sued, Janet Kleinfeldter, she's the attorney for the AG's office that was representing Trey Hargit, Congressman Kristoff, Congressman Jim Cooper, Congressman Steve Cohen, Senator Marsha Blackburn, Senator Bill Hagerty. We've got a status hearing on that scheduled later this week. I'm going to go ahead and file a motion to dismiss. I've had a few Commissioners ask me about attorney's fees and sanctions. If you so desire, I'd need a motion for you to go after attorney's fees and sanctions on this pro se lawsuit. This is the one on the voting machines. And it's, to me, it's frivolous. We don't even have that type of voting machine in this county. And the ones that we have do not have an internet module, and they're not capable of what she's alleged. But anyway, if you need the more extensive facts of this case, I'll be glad to share them with you. But if you do want me to ask for attorney's fees and sanctions against these pro se plaintiffs, please make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. It's 14, yes, one, no, motion passes.
Okay, just a couple of informational items. The deer hunt draw was last Friday. Leanne in the mayor's office was our guest picker, did a great job. I stole that from ESPN. 38 names were drawn. If we have some people that do not take their spot or do not show up, we're going to have another draw pursuant to the resolution. Winners are being notified. I'm down two ladies right now in my office, just me and Rachel, right now. We've been, had a terrible day as far as work, but we'll try to get to notifying everyone. We notified about five people today. But anyway, we've got those names, they can call my office, and at that point, they can come by and get their permit, their parking pass, get their map, sign the release of liability, and all the other stuff. Charter update, starting tomorrow is our public hearings across the county. Tomorrow is here in this room at 6:30. Wednesday is Oak Ridge Civic Center in the social room at 6:30. And Thursday is Anderson County High School at 6:30, that's in the auditorium. Anyone wanting to look at the copy of the proposed charter, we have it on the front page of our website, it's on the right-side menu. Entire thing is posted there. The delinquent tax sale is set for the 13th of December. Again, this is going to be an online delinquent tax sale. If you know anyone that's interested, they need to pre-register through GOV-EASE, G-O-V-E-A-S-E.com, and pre-register there, and you'll be able to get the keys to go ahead and bid that morning. That's going to be a Saturday morning. I think that's all I have for you. Great ideas on the TCAT promotion. One thing we do have, and I don't want to offer this unless they have room up there, I know some of these classes are full, but I could talk to Ryan Sutton and Andy and see if we can't do just a tour via camera, post it on ACTV, show some of the programs. We don't have to talk, we just ask the instructors to talk, tell us a little bit about it, maybe, you know, 15, 20 minutes, and we can post that on ACTV to get the word out. I do want to run that by the director up there and see, you know, exactly which programs does he, is he full on, or does he need some help getting students on? But anyway, we can do that if you so desire, and I'll be glad to talk to Ryan about that. They've done some great programs. I used to call them Channel 95, but it's ACTV now. Any questions that you may have? Be glad to answer any questions on any legal matter or anything I can help you with.
I have one, Jay.
Yes, sir.
How many items are on the tax sale?
It's always very fluid. They pay down to the very last day, sometimes that morning they pay down. Looks like Norris is just about paid up. Last time I checked, we're still right around 50 in Oak Ridge, but that last week or so, we get a lot of movement there. But if you need a copy of the list, just contact me, and I'll be glad to send you a copy of that list.
Thanks.
Anything else? I do appreciate you never hesitate to call me, email, find me, drop by the office, I'm glad to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports, we've got Operations Committee report by Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Allen made a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-10-961 to apply for federal assistance from the U.S. Department of Agriculture for the purpose of building a new animal shelter, seconded by Commissioner McCamey and Commissioner Verrick. A motion passed to forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes the action items of the Operations Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we've got the Animal Care Advisory Committee report, Chairman Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first off, thank you for that motion through Operations, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing that to our attention. I know the Animal Advisory Committee spoke about a new shelter, so you're way ahead of us in the group there, so thank you. And thank you, Commission, for supporting that. We met on October 4th. Really didn't have a whole lot of stuff. We had a motion by Commissioner Dennerberg to send the website suggestions from the subcommittee to the mayor for her review and implementation, if she so chooses, to the committee and asked... And that motion was seconded by Veda Oberlin. I'll make that motion to support that, just to send the items from the task group that's in there in the minutes there at the end. Website suggestions is all it is.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Next, Mr. Chairman, was a request by Vice Chairman Steven Newby made for a motion for the Law Director's Office to present the plot map and the architect's drawing for the property where the old poor farm was used to be along with the plot map of the proposed site for the Clinton City, and the drawings, schematic of the Brady Corporation, seconded by Lauren Blaski.
We've already done that. Mayor has all of them. Do you want to say something?
I'll just put a motion and book it.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
We've got a brief update from IT, from Brian Young, and that was appreciated, and that was the end of business. Next meeting will be November 7th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any new business? Any old business? Commissioner Mays.
It's not really old business. I just wanted to, we mentioned Deputy Joe Weaver earlier, I just wanted to let everybody know that his services are on the 21st. From 10 to 12 will be the receiving of friends, that'll be at Second Baptist Church, so if anybody would like to go.
Yes. Any other, any other old business announcements? We got through this part in 69 minutes. You're welcome. See you next month.